I'll call this meeting to order Monday, September the 21st. Want to welcome everyone. Detective Lieutenant Commander Ron Liddell is here. He's going to come forward now. He's from the police department. He's going to introduce our friend or you're going to do something. You're in charge.
Yes, actually, as it turns out, Max, Mayor. We've got some good news at the police department at the behest of Chief Lee. He has offered us the opportunity to actually have a chaplain's program set up there. We have six ministers from the local churches who have stepped forward as volunteers in those positions. We started the first of a seven-week Smyrna Police Department Chaplain's Academy. That started last Thursday, and we hope to have a graduation here for them at the November 2nd City Council meeting. In lieu of that, what I would like to do is introduce Reverend Butler. He is one of those that has stepped forward to fill in one of those slots and like to have him do the invocation and pledge tonight.
So will anyone please rise at this time?
Let's pray. Father, you are good and your mercy endures forever. We ask for your wisdom and your anointing to rest upon every person here. We invite your presence in this place. We ask for the purpose of tonight to be for the best of Smyrna, for the place where we live, the place where we love, that will bring glory and honor to your name and peace and joy and love to every single family that calls this place their home. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the nine estates of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are looking for a new church or want to change, Faith Christian Center is located on South Cobb Drive at Church Street. Is that right, at Church Road? Big congregation, because I know I see them about 1:00. You let them out. You keep them there a good while, so that's good. There you go. All right. Thank you so much. Agenda changes. We do have, we have three agenda changes. Item four, let's see, B is a zoning request that will be tabled until October the 19th. That was for a piece of, a tract of land on Spring Street. Item C, that rezoning will be tabled till October the 5th. That's the Bank Street, the 1091, 1107, 1121. Item 5A is a previous license public hearing for pouring beer and wine at Starbucks. That will be tabled until 10:05. So those are the changes on the, on the agenda. Under the Mayor O'Leary Report, we have a proclamation and recognition of Cumberland Diamond Exchange 2015 Small Business of the Year. Councilman Melanie Pritchett will make that somewhere amongst the multitudes. I know there's some folks from Cumberland Diamond Exchange. If y'all want to come forward, don't be afraid.
Bring the whole family. He has the whole family, Max.
Man, who's, who's working tonight?
Nope, we're closed tonight.
Hey, I see they got a boyfriend or a son-in-law that's going.
A son-in-law.
And you got a, hey, you come up behind here, you take the picture. Melanie Pritchett's got a proclamation, recognition Cumberland Diamond Exchange.
Okay. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Cumberland Diamond Exchange 2015 Small Business of the Year. Whereas, we are proud to recognize Cumberland Diamond Exchange, a Smyrna business since 1982, for being honored by the Cobb Chamber of Commerce as the 2015 Small Business of the Year. And whereas, Cumberland Diamond Exchange was established in 1982 by our brothers Wayne and Mark Jacobson, and is now owned and operated by Mark and Rhonda Jacobson. And whereas, Cumberland Diamond Exchange has occupied the corner of Spring Road and Cumberland Boulevard in Smyrna since it was first opened. A major renovation was completed last year with the business growing to approximately 4,800 square feet from its original 1,200 square feet. And whereas, Cumberland Diamond Exchange strongly believes in community involvement, which ties it with their philosophy of service. Throughout the years, many charities in the metro area have received help in the form of donations, including Cobb Energy Performing Arts Center, Cobb Library Association, Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, the Wellstar Foundation Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center, American Heart Association, YWCA of North West Georgia, and the American Cancer Society Pink Ribbon Golf Classic. And whereas, this year marks the 33rd anniversary of Cumberland Diamond Exchange. Their mission statement is committed to go the extra mile, dedicated to exceed their expectation, your expectations, and experience to buy wisely and sell professionally. And whereas, Cumberland Diamond Exchange is a first-generation, family-owned jewelry store, which has been ranked in the top 5% of independent specialty jewelers in the United States. Now, therefore, I am Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2015, as a day of recognition for Cumberland Diamond Exchange, and encourage all city residents, officials, and staff to congratulate them on their many accomplishments and contribution to the community. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this 21st day of September in the year of our Lord, 2015. I am Max Bacon, Mayor. Wow.
I swear to my soul, y'all look like Olin Mills, 1970-something. You're perfect.
Thank you, Max.
I know this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
And Mark and Rhonda, I know that they always get the spotlight. I'll take a picture of them.
Don't mess this up, man.
Max, we're honored to represent the city of Smyrna and Cobb County for business excellence in Smyrna. We've either lived in Smyrna or had our business. I think I moved to Smyrna in 1977 before a lot of you folks were born. Our business started in 1982. We couldn't be more proud of what the city has done to improve its image and just what you all have created for this community, and we are honored just to be a part of it. So thank you so much.
Please tell us, introduce the folks here if you can remember who they are.
Well, the brains of the operation, my wife Rhonda.
Absolutely. You're a smart man.
We have, we start this way. Bill Lerner, Angie Holcomb, Mike Holcomb, Melissa Jacobson, and our general manager, Prentice Johnson.
And what about the camera guy?
And our camera guys, our sweet son-in-law, Greg Bishop.
You're lucky to be taking pictures. Y'all have done so much for that part of town. For those that don't have a memory like I don't sometimes, but that was the Boot Village for the longest time, and y'all went in there and completely renovated, and it's unbelievable. I went to your ribbon cutting, your grand opening. John Loud messed it up. He had so many signs that you thought John Loud was opening up a business there, but...
And he's not even my security guy.
But thank y'all so much for the service y'all provide, the citizens of Smyrna. I'll tell you what, if you buy something there and it doesn't work out, they will take you back and exchange it for something. I'm living proof of that, so.
Mark and Rhonda, I want to say thank you so much for what y'all do for the entire city and state of Georgia, because I know y'all are just very giving, kind people, and I'm glad to represent you.
Y'all have a great reputation, and we appreciate it.
We're honored.
Thank you so very much.
So go get those pictures developed now.
It'll be in the paper tomorrow. We'll let y'all have your meeting.
Thank y'all so much.
Four more years of bacon, okay?
All right, we get into item, that's all under the Mayor O'Leary Report. Item four is land issues, zoning and annexation. A 2015-226, public hearing zoning request Z15-015, approval of a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations. 1.61 acres, landlot 634, 1680 Roswell Street. Christopher and Ivana Oblikie. Are y'all here? Okay. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
The subject property, the property was originally approved for rezoning from office distribution to neighborhood shopping in 2006, zoning case Z06048, for 15,960 square feet of retail. And the retail center was planned to accommodate six retail stores that average 1,160 square feet per store, and a 5160 square foot food store, and two restaurants that averaged just under 2,000 square feet. The applicant has developed the site and completed Phase 1, which included an 8,553 square foot food store, and is here before you to make some changes to that 2006 zoning.
If the applicant could please step forward. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this amendment?
Can we all come together or one of them?
Yeah, y'all can all come together, yeah. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comment? For the record, no one spoke up, so. Okay, this is Ms. Terry Nullwich's district, Ms. Nullwich.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. I would like to invite Ken Sedgefield to tell us.
Y'all can sit on the front row.
Yes. If Ken will tell us a little bit more about the plan.
It's actually nice to stand up here again. This is, it was approved in 2006 originally as red, which was prior to my time, because I came in 2007. But we've been working with a plan, and we got it on the ground, so it's very nice to stand up here and see something grow. This amendment is one of those easy amendments, at least from my standpoint, because it shows the success of that original project.
One of these days soon, we're going to get a upgraded system.
I'm about as upgraded as you're going to get, Max. All of the pertinent information about this case has already been mentioned, but it did go to the Planning Commission back in August, and it's coming to you with a recommendation of approval, and that was a seven of it. Stafford recommended that this be approved as well. Existing condition as referenced is the 8,553 square foot grocery store. It is a neighborhood shopping conditional district, and there is no land use change with this. It will continue under the Neighborhood Activity Center. The subject property is 1.61 acres. As already stated, it was rezoned in 2006. It had a multitude of uses that were proposed, and the first part of that has been developed. What this request is consisting of is to add on to the existing food store and then to create a multi-tenant building. Some would say in front of it, some would say behind it, because it's actually in a pie-shaped lot right at that corner of Roswell Street, which we refer to sometimes as 5 points and sometimes as 6 points. But that's where this property is located. There is an overall increase of 1,283 square feet of building area over the original plan. And there's additional retail space and storage that was proposed for the existing business. And then the multi-tenant, which would be next door to it, would schedule to either be two retail shops or restaurant locations. They're also thinking about the possibility of rooftop dining, if all goes well. Here are the zoning maps. You can see that the subject property is indeed a, you know, a triangle lot right at that intersection. This is the currently approved site plan and the currently approved elevations. You can see a little bit of difference here in the proposed site plan, because the original grocery store that's there would increase with another 6,300 square feet, and then the two additional buildings that are proposed towards the actual pie shape of that lot at the intersection of Hawthorne and Roswell. These are the proposed building elevations. Basically, it's a continuation of the existing design, just carried through the addition and then on to the new multi-tenant building that's proposed. You can see little umbrellas on top to indicate the possibility of rooftop dining there. There would be a plaza. If you look at the lower right, they would have a brick plaza around that building. Just several pictures of the subject property. This actually is on the front, that shows you where the front entrance is. The lower right actually shows you the area that would have the expanded buildings go into. As I stated previously, staff and Planning Commission had recommended approval of this with the standard conditions. Utilities remain underground. Any additional street issues have to come into compliance, you know, no debris being buried, has to meet our tree ordinance, have landscaping plans, and maintain open space plans as required. Again, the standard issue is about retention ponds. They have to maintain the 10-foot wide sidewalk along Roswell and Hawthorne. A 10-foot buffer shall be provided along the eastern property line. Issues on how to handle their dumpsters and brick enclosures on that. All of that remains the same. That's already on the property. Those would remain the same. But when we get into items 11 and 12, you can see things have been struck through and new language provided to change the dates of those plans. So now we're talking about a July 27th plan, as well as number 12, we've added in the applicant shall incorporate windows and shadow boxes along the northern, which is Roswell Street elevation, the western Matthews Street elevation, and the eastern, which would be the public storage elevation side, which is the facade of the food store and the multi-tenant. Again, neon flashing lights, and actually, the billboard on the site has, had already been addressed, so. We're maintaining the following setbacks that currently exist out there, as well as the prohibited use that we agreed to previously. There's no changes in any of those. And then 17, again, it has a new date on that. 18 was complied with, with the parallel parking that's actually on the street. 19 is the applicant shall dedicate the necessary right of way to the seat needed to complete the proposed roundabout road improvements planned for that intersection of Hawthorne Matthews and Roswell Street. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But as I said, starting this presentation, this is a success story for the city, and it's a pleasure to be up here recommending approval for you.
I have a couple of quick questions. I know I noticed in the setbacks, it looks like there will be enough space to accommodate the roundabout that we have slated through the 2016 splosh at that intersection.
Yes.
Which is going to be a very good thing. I think it'll be good for Casey Foods as well. And I agree with you, this really has been a success story for this neighborhood. It's, on a lot of reasons. One, it's a lovely building to look at, and they are good members of the community, and they have very good relationships with neighbors. My son, in the summertime, rides his bike there to buy sodas and things like that. The other thing that has been nice is how it's led to, I think, I think that it's, we're having a little bit of a renaissance in that area. We knew it was going to happen. The economy slowdown stopped a lot of things happening, but things are picking up there, and so I'm excited to see, as you said, that this is taking off again. And they also own the mom-and-pop food store across the street.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions, Ken? If the applicant will step forward. Who's going to do the talking?
My name is Tonya Muhammad. I'm with Avant Architecture, and I can answer questions about the building.
Terry.
Yeah, and I wanted to thank you, because there was some, definitely some collaboration when y'all came to the city with the proposals, with the changes that you made, and I definitely appreciate being so up into, including the shadow boxes, for example, just to change the, the street view of what you see, so you're not just looking at a wall, a solid wall. I appreciate that very much. Tell us a little bit more about what your vision is.
Well, what we are intending to do, it has been, has been stated several times, which is to incorporate the neighborhood in just, not coming to the grocery store, but also enjoying the property and the surroundings of the property, because I live in Marietta, not in Marina, but I noticed that the city of Marietta is making some improvements. So Mr. Bouffier's and Mr. Bouffier's vision was to actually improve the area and help it to grow and to become, you know, a better area, because I remember when we started years ago, it was, it was very deteriorated, and, but things have changed a lot. So by building, by making the addition to the existing grocery store, he's going to, he wants to remove what is across the street, because that's where most of his freezers are right now, and he's trying to incorporate that into the new building, so then he can take care of handling the property across the street. And then in the new addition that we're trying to make, the retail portion, our restaurant, we're trying to bring something like a, not necessarily a Starbucks, but something along that line, where the community can come and enjoy and support the business, but also they can use Wi-Fi, you know, and it just can be a great environment to conduct business and to do other things. So, and also, one of the things that you would notice on the site plan, the proposed site plan, is that we are incorporating a little bit of a park area. So it's not only the buildings that we want, but we want the surrounding area to look great also.
And I appreciate that very much. And something I meant to say earlier, one of the things that I think y'all have done to improve the community is now there is a safe, clean place where people in the neighborhood can go, and not just if they need something that's Caribbean or West African in origin, but if they need a loaf of white bread, or whole wheat bread, or a gallon of milk, and some eggs, some lunch meat, stuff to make a salad with dinner, you have all of that there. And that, I think, has been a real amenity that's been brought into the community, because it's been a bit of a grocery desert back there.
You know, one of the things that I think is really great with this project is to get away from the convenience store concept, and what they did is brought something else, you know, because the convenience store can be a little rough sometimes. So I like what they have there.
Ms. Muhammad, may I ask you about the rooftop dining option?
Yes.
Please come in.
Actually, the building is going to be built, we're going to go ahead and construct it with the requirements for the amount of pounds per square feet to meet having people on the top. So if the renters are the people that are going to be using the spaces, decide to do something on the roof, the, all of the provisions are going to be in place already. We have a stair going up to the roof, we have, that is covered all the way through, and then we have the open space above that will be already structurally sound for that.
By the way, we do have some homes available in Smyrna. We'd love to have you, Ms. Muhammad, as a resident as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Then at this time, I'd like to move to approve item 4A. This is the public hearing for zoning request Z15-015, approval of a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations. This is a 1.61 acre tract, landlot 634, 1680 Roswell Street. The applicants are Christopher and Ivana Obuffie.
Second.
A motion is second to approve this modification to the previous site plan and building elevation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. This approves 6-0, and for the record, Mr. Corky Welch is on vacation, so this approves 6-1. That's the best you could do. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Item 4B and C will both be tabled. I'll go and just read those, and then let Ms. Nullwich table them. 2015-261, a public hearing, zoning request Z15-016, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for development of five new single-family residences at a density of 3.81 units per acre. 2.36 acres, landlot 593, 1505, 1515, 1525, 1529, 1533, and 1537, Spring Street. Perera Group LLC, it'll be tabled to the 19th. Can I get you to do that just real quick, Ms. Nullwich?
Absolutely. At this time, I move to table item 4B. It's item 2015-261. This is the public hearing for zoning request Z15-016, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five new single-family residences at a density of 3.81 units per acre. It is a 2.36 acre tract, landlot 593, 1505, 1515, 1525, 1529, 1533, and 1537, Spring Street. Perera Group LLC is the applicant, and they have requested to table this item until October 19th, 2015.
Motion is second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Need one more person to vote. This approves 6-0. Item C, 2015-166, public hearings, zoning request Z15-008, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes, 1.27 acres, landlot 488, 1091, 1107, 1121 Banks. Free Pritchard Brothers, the applicant's request is tabled to October the 5th. Ms. Nullwich.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I like, I move to table item 4C, 2015-166. This was also the public hearing for zoning request Z15-008, a rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes. This is a 1.27 acre tract, landlots 488 through 1091, I'm sorry, landlot 488. The address is 1091, 1107, and 1121 Bank Street. The applicant is Pritchard Brothers Incorporated, and the applicant has requested to table this item until October 5th, 2015.
Motion is second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 6-0. Item 5A, 2015-291, public hearing, previous license request, 2015-291, beer and wine pouring, 2680 Cobb Parkway Coffee House Inc., doing business at Starbucks, number 8371, with Joseph George Del Savo as agent. This will be tabled to the, or has been requested to be tabled to 10, 10:05:21. Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant has applied for this license, was out of town and unable to come tonight, and corporate called and wanted to know if they could send an attorney, and our policy is that the applicant has to appear in person in order to get this done. So they've asked me to table it for two weeks, and it will come back up on October the 5th. And with that, I'll make a motion. 5A, item 2015-291, public hearing, private license request, 2015-291, beer and wine pouring, 2680 Cobb Parkway Coffee House Holdings Inc., DBA Starbucks, number 8371, with Joseph George Del Savo as agent. And I think this is going to be the first Starbucks to have the wine and beer, and it's going toward, most of them are going to do that, but I think we have the first one. So I am excited to have that in Ward 1. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table that until October 5th.
Second.
Motion is second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. This approves 6-0. This approves 6-0. Item 5B, previous license, 2015-298, public hearing, previous license request, 2015, 298, beer and wine pouring, 2517 Spring Road Suite 101, Taco Cantina LLC, doing business as Taco Cantina, with Stephanie Brianna Gonzalez as the agent, is the agent here. Okay? Mr. Jones, the background, please.
I keep forgetting to turn this on. The registered agent that's present here has completed a background check by the Smyrna Police Department, and as a result of that background check, they failed to reveal any information that would collude the issuance of the license, and it appears to be in order.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or likely to make any public comment concerning this request for beer and wine pouring? Let the record show there is none, and you are Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Ms. Melanie Pritchett for, Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Ms. Gonzalez. Did you go by Stephanie?
I go by Brianna.
Brianna, okay.
You can step on up closer to that mic. Miss, got it. You may have to adjust it. That's...
Yeah, I'm a little tall.
There you go.
About how long have you had your business open?
About a month and a half now.
Are you doing well?
We are. We're very excited.
Yeah, I spoke with your husband last week, and he said that they were, you were excited about your business and getting your license there. I say that you've met all the requirements, you did your training, and are you aware of the stings that we do about carding? Tell us how you, do you have, you have people working in there?
Yes, we do. We generally have one cash register person. We don't have servers, because it's a go-up-to-order type setup, but we do have at least one cash register. So we are, we've, recently this week, we've hired a person that already has an alcohol permit. She works in Douglasville. She's going to come on with us part-time and just learn the ropes, and she's going to be our full-time person once the alcohol license, probably in about a month or so.
Okay. And so you're fully aware that we're really strict about making sure that you...
Yes, and they went over that on the class, so it made me very nervous. I want to make sure I do everything right, so...
Yeah. I mean, once your business to succeed, so that's why it's so important that you go to that training and earn everything you can to be in compliance, because serving beer and wine is not, you know, not something to be taken lightly, and I'm sure you don't. But the police report concludes there's nothing that would keep you from having the license. And is there anybody that has any questions? Yes, Mr. Fennel.
Good evening, and thank you for investing in Smyrna. We hope your business is wildly successful.
Thank you.
Have you served alcohol before at another location in your personal work history?
No.
Okay, has...
I've worked at restaurants, but I've never, if that's what you mean, but I've never...
Right.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Has anyone in the business that will be taking, you say you've hired someone who is going to be...
She works as a server at a place in Douglasville, and she does serve alcohol currently.
Okay.
And we do have it set up so that any new hires will be trained on all of the regulations with the RAS, according to the RAS classes, and we are incorporating it into our policy handbook, so...
Excellent, excellent. The compliance checks this Ms. Pritchett spoke of is an important element of our granting a privilege to serve alcohol in Smyrna. It's an important element of how we protect the public, and the public safety element is really important, not just for you and your customers, but also for the public. And so we do find that to be one of the more important responsibilities we, as a city, have, and we appreciate you complying with that and helping us with that. We will hope to have great success out of you for your business. It is an element, just know that any employee can put your license at risk, and we don't want to have that happen. So having that policy manual to protect you and having that training is an important element. And thank you for coming to Smyrna with your business and all the best to you.
Thank you. We just recently moved here a year ago, and we're very excited.
You live in Smyrna as well?
We do. We live right across from Campbell Middle. My kids, I have three children, two go to Teasley, and my son is in Campbell Middle. He walks to school every day. It's great.
That's awesome. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll go ahead. I'm going to make a motion. It's item 5B, 2015-298, public hearing, private license, privileged license request, 2015-298, beer and wine pouring, 2517 Spring Road Suite 101, Taco Cantina LLC, doing business as Taco Cantina, with Stephanie Brianna Gonzalez as the agent, and I move that we grant her the license.
Second.
A motion second to approve this previous license request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 6-0, it's as good as you can get.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Item 6 is formal business. We have nothing. At 7 is commercial building permits. We do not have any. 8 is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
There are several items on the consent agenda. Item 2015, 303 was, is for security cameras to be awarded to the second lowest responsive bidder, LMI Systems, $439,763. The next item on the consent agenda, item 2015-304, this is for drainage project improvements for Highview Drive at Plumcrest Drive. We awarded to the lowest bidder, Ardeto Construction, in the amount of $27,889. Next item is item 2015-305. This is for the Hickory Hill Drive Sewer and Storm Drainage Project, to be awarded to the lowest bidder, Ardeto Construction, for $56,500. The next item is 2015-312. This is for the Village Parkway improvements, to the lowest bidder, Summit Construction and Development. This is for $624,617.80. This is a rather large item, so I'll just give you a brief description of this. This is for an eight-foot-wide concrete trail that will, that will traverse Village Parkway from Windy Hill to Springs, Spring Road. The next item is item 2015-306. This is an approval to the lowest responsive bidder, Summit Systems, different company, for the replacement of network equipment for the amount of $105,826, and also the optional network access for the control security software, in the amount of $37,403.27. The next item is for the purchase of ammunition for the police department to the lowest responsive bidder, Gulf State Distributors, in the amount of $29,168. The final two items is approval to use council chambers for Ward 6, Homeowner Association Meeting for Oak Ridge Estates on September 29th, 2015, from 8, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And finally, approval to use council chambers on Wednesday, September 23rd, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Williams Park Annual Neighborhood Association Meeting. That concludes the items on the consent agenda.
Please approve.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. This approves 42. Ms. Wilkinson and Mr. Lenika oppose that. This approves 42. Nine committee reports. We'll start tonight, Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the summer comes to a close, we're going to see a transition. Kids are all in school now at all the various schools. The time will change soon, and we'll all need to be cognizant of that. In the meanwhile, I want to announce a change in a date that I've announced for my next town hall meeting, originally scheduled for tomorrow night on the Maxwell Annexation off Pebblebrook Road. That date has been moved to October 6th, which is a Tuesday, and that will be at the Summit Clubhouse at the Vinings Estates Community at 7:00 p.m. I have scheduled a second one on the same issue, because that is for homeowners inside that HOA only, for Thursday, October 8th, at 7:00 p.m. at Whitfield Academy in the Barnett Gathering Room, and that will also be at 7:00 p.m. I'll have this in my newsletter, which will be published tomorrow, and I will announce it again at the next opportunity. Apart from that, my report is to ask my fellow citizens to, when they have an opportunity to see a member of our public safety team in our community, to give them the thanks that they are due for protecting us 24/7/365. With that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Mr. White Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few brief announcements, some sad notes. I want to express condolences to the Hyde family on the passing of Mrs. Geraldine Hyde, mother of Mike Hyde, former council candidate, and Christie Hyde, her grandmother, a firefighter for Smyrna. We were sad to learn of her passing a week ago, and, and he was sitting in the audience until a few minutes ago, but David Brown, a resident of Forest Hills, his mother passed away Monday a week ago, and we extend our condolences to David and his family. And I see in the audience a new father, Derek Norton. Congratulations on your new baby girl, and you look well-rested, and I'm not sure why. But wish you the best.
He didn't, he didn't have the baby.
That's true. That's true. But finally, I was able to be at Campbell High School last Friday for something, the new principal is trying out Dr. Gene Walker, their Power Hour. I think Ms. Nolowicz was also there, and I think we had a great time volunteering and being around the kids and supporting the school, and I appreciate that opportunity. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. I'd like to share my condolences also for the death, with condolences for the family of Ms. Geraldine Hyde, and our, my friend Mike Hyde and his daughter, Christie Hyde, and also share my condolences for the mother of David Brown that was here until a few minutes ago. So, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Taryn Nolowicz.
Thank you. I have actually several things to report on tonight. The first one is, you know, during the past few years, and people, you know, can sometimes say, "Well, all you do in city councils, you what, you go to ribbon cuttings and you go to a meeting." There's a lot more to it than that, but during the past several years, I have attended a ribbon cutting or two, but nothing like the ribbon cutting I attended for the DDP Yoga Studio on Concord Road this past Saturday night. It is, it's a really cool facility, and it's a segue into basically me saying how excited I am about everything that's been happening along Concord Road. You know, it's great seeing business owners who are so committed to the city of Smyrna come in and, you know, work with staff, do what they need to do, and build something that really is going to be an attraction for people from across the area. But when we do these large projects, like the Concord Road widening, there are headaches, but the payoff is tremendous, and I think we're starting to see that payoff now on Concord Road with projects like the DDP Yoga Studio that replaced a medical office, an eye doctor building that had gotten to, it was a little dated-looking. The metal frame building is now being built out. It's going to be a medical office building. The Arkell Veterinary Office, they, they built a new beautiful facility further along Concord Road. The Linear Park is in its, the stages of its, early stages of its inception. We're going to be talking soon about plans to what we'll be doing there on Concord Road. Other existing buildings have given themselves a little bit of a facelift, maybe a fresh coat of paint. It's really amazing seeing how the city can do something that then becomes kind of transformative. And we have projects like this happening throughout the city. We have Belmont and Johnquill, of course, that are coming up. There's the Smyrna Grove Project, which is, I think, going to be a tremendous injection of vitality to the Windy Hill and South Cobb Drive area. And that's what's great about these projects, like Concord Road, Belmont, Johnquill, the impact, and the Market Village, frankly, the impact that these projects have really exceeds the footprints of just those developments, and I think we are seeing that on Concord Road right now, so it was really fun to get to go to that. I was at Campbell High School for the Power Hour last Friday, and I made cookies also. Homemade cookies. Oh, they're gone. They don't last long. But they, it was. What was so fun about that was, you know, it was just a really positive afternoon. It was positive because of the faculty and staff. It was positive because of the tremendous support that the program received from the community, and it was positive because of these 2,600 Campbell High School students who went from activity to activity, once they realized, "Oh, wait, we can do what we want. We don't, we're not scheduled..." It was a really neat experience for them. It was empowering in a lot of ways, because when you are a high school student, or a middle school student, or an elementary student, you basically go where you're told to go for seven hours a day. So I think they really enjoyed it in that regard. Earlier last week, I was able to participate in the Cobb Chambers Principal for a Day Program at Campbell Middle School. That was a great experience. Their principal, Jonathan Tanner, is on point. He is doing a great job. It was clear that the kids were happy to be there. But what made the biggest impression on me, and I visited several classrooms, walked through the halls, visited the cafeteria, heard the morning announcements, so many of the kids who I saw there, either in their classrooms or walking through the hall, were carrying a book. And obviously, they had textbooks at the school, but what I saw was they were, so many of them had like a book of fiction, or, you know, or an interesting nonfiction book, and they were reading for pleasure, and that was a very great thing to see at Campbell Middle, was how engaged those students are and how eager they are to learn, and the kind of initiative they take upon themselves to learn. It was, that was a very great experience. It was the first time I've been able to, to participate in that, and I was so glad I could. And then finally, I just want to mention Bike Share. It is up and running. I am so excited about the reception the program's received. I was going up to Taste of Smyrna on Saturday, and a man was there with his family. They're like, "Wow, this is so great. Wow, this was such a great idea." I'm like, "Yeah, it was kind of a great idea." But everyone has, it's, during the first week of the program, more than 170 trips were made, and that's just through Friday. I cannot wait to see the stats for how many rides were taken on the bikes this weekend. It's been neat to see how they move around the city. I've seen people, you know, enjoying a gelato in the Market Village, and they've got their Zagster bike propped against, you know, their table where they're sitting. It's very exciting, and it's fun to see how that project is taking off. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
Yeah, I will. I'm sorry. She asked, Ms. Bluestein asked me to clarify the cost. The Bike Share is free for the first four hours. You register, and you can do it either on your computer at home, and it'll give you a code, or you can go, and the easiest way to do it is if you, if you have a smartphone, just download the app to your smartphone. It is free for the first four hours. After that, it's $5 an hour. Honestly, the main reason we even did that was because we don't want people to, like, take a bike home overnight and then start riding it again the next morning. So it is free for the first four hours. After the first four hours, it is $5 an hour. There is no membership fee. There is no registration fee to set up your account. Thank you.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
Thank you for clarifying that. I've gotten more emails about that than anything else. The only thing I wanted to remind the residents of Ward 2 is, is that I am going to be holding a Ward 2 meeting on October 3rd, which is Saturday, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon at the library. So I hope that, I have invited several people to come and discuss various projects, and I just hope that the Ward 2 residents will be able to attend. Thank you.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to announce for the second time, a Ward 1 town hall meeting tomorrow night, right here in council chambers, from 6:30 to 9:00. We are also advertising this on the digital sign that's right in front of Fire Station Number 3. It's currently showing several other things. Each item that's on there shows for a minute, and I'm sure that most of you, if you've driven by, you've noted that, noticed that digital sign, and we will be able, and Andrew can use hers when she's having her meeting, to let people know and remind them. So if you forget what time it is, you can take a look at that digital sign, and it will tell you the time. It's going to be an exciting meeting. I've invited a lot of people, and I hope we have a good turnout if it doesn't rain, and I think everybody will be happy about Spring Road and the different things that are going on in our community. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mike Jones.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Doc Cochrane. Terry Graham. We do not have a show call hearing. We've had several people signed up for citizens' input. Alec Backree, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
I want a first comment that I'm very let down that no one on this council brought up about the term limits to have at least a vote. A lot of people were very interested in this. Again, to me, open government is where you have a chance for the people to express their opinions on an issue. In the last election, it was a liquor referendum. I feel this one was more important because of the press that Marietta and Kennesaw will be doing next year. I think this is just another example of closed government where we don't have a say. My second comment is what happened on North Cooper Lake Road. After listening to the dissertation by the councilperson on Ward 7, which was previously his ward, going all for the developer, this place was packed, standing room only, with 800 on a petition. It's "we, the people." The impression I get here is it's what the councilperson thinks. The impression I get here is it's what the council person thinks and not what the majority think. And I find this outrageous that this was lucky on a four to three vote. This is probably one of the most easiest decisions that should have been made and went seven zero. I've never seen so many people against something, and yet three of the council people turned their back on the majority, whether it's in your ward or in someone else's ward. It's the people that pay your salaries, not the developer. Case in point was Johnco Plaza. Majority did not want apartments over there, yet the council person voted against the majority over there. And in this last second one, where Halpern is doing the same format with apartments, yet you approved it. I compliment the lady in Ward One, who used the only words, saying she talked to her constituents. The other three people that voted for that to be apartments, it all seemed to come down to what they thought, not what the majority think. And I think, I hope this changes because the majority should rule. And I don't feel that some of the people on this council are expressing their viewpoints and not the majority of the people's viewpoints. And I just find, it's just outrageous to see that last week, last meeting on North Cooper Lake, to hear for the developer and absolutely not see that those council people voted against, turned their back on the majority. And this affects us all. And I hope this changes and they wake up to that fact. Thank you.
Derek Norton, 1,000 Afton Way Southeast, Ward One, Council candidacy announcement.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Lenica, thank you for the acknowledgement. If I look well rested, I'm either hiding it well or we've got to get you some glasses. My wife, Flora, and I have been campaigning for city council in Ward One for several months now, and we've met hundreds of Ward One residents and looking forward to meeting several more as the campaign goes on. It's been a lot of fun, and we're having a really good time with it. I wanted to wait to make a public announcement at a council meeting about my candidacy, candidacy until after I qualified. So Monday of qualifying, I went down and did that, and the first council meeting after was the one on, the last one, on Tuesday, the day after Labor Day. So I came here, signed up to make the announcement, and about three minutes before the meeting started, got a text from Flora, said, "You better get home quick because it's time to have the baby." So I will tell, I know y'all had a big night that night, too, because I'll tell you, I left here, got home, got all of our stuff together, got Flora in the car, drove up to Kennison. They prepped her. She delivered the baby. We went to, we went to recovery room for an hour. Family came, we went upstairs, family came, and family left. And if I had left the hospital right then, there's a chance I would have made it back to make my announcement. Because y'all were still waiting. Of course, I stayed with my, with my wife and the new baby. But, but I'm here tonight to make that announcement. I'm running in for city council in Ward One. We are, we couldn't be more excited. We had a healthy baby daughter last, a week ago Tuesday. We're going to raise our family here. We'll be in Smyrna a long time, and we love this city and our community and our neighborhood, and Ward One residents are awesome. And I can't wait to represent Ward One with new energy and accessibility and accountability that citizens deserve. And I appreciate all that y'all do and look forward to serving with you.
Brandon Bentley, 3504, or 3585, South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, Ward Three, candidacy announcement.
Sorry about that. It's a little scribble. Hi, guys. Good evening, current council member. Bentley Brandon. Max knows me very well. He comes by the car wash. Own the car wash on South Cobb Drive in Smyrna. Luxury wash. I started working there when I was 13, started living in Smyrna, pretty much have been living in Smyrna all my life. But started working when I was 13. Eventually, I took over the business. I became a business owner and do a lot of fundraising in the community, did a lot of reaching out with other business owners to address some issues. Decided this year is time for a change. It's time for Ward Three to have proper representation. So I announced my candidacy. This Saturday, we also are holding a fundraiser for Campbell High School in order to help them guys with some football equipment, JV, and varsity. Pretty much, I'm here just to announce it, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
You did good?
Yeah, thank you.
Wade Lenica, 3950, Glenhurst Drive, Council Committees.
Thank you, Your Honor. When I'm out on the campaign trail, I get a lot of questions from citizens saying, "What would you do differently than the current incumbent?" And I answer that in a number of ways, but one of the ways that I want to state for the citizens that perhaps would be different concerns the committees on council that we have and the way we work today. Our committees are functionally oriented by department. We have an HR committee. We have a police public safety committee. We have a library committee, et cetera. The committees don't meet unless there's an employee appeal, and the council members assigned to those committees don't work together on those committees in any functioning way. I'd like to, next year, if I'm elected mayor, to reorganize the committees to be more idea-oriented, focused on broader goals outside of just departments. For instance, the first committee that I would appoint in the top priority in my campaign would be an education committee. The focus of that committee would be to improve academic performance in our schools and to work with the Cobb County School District and the principals in a partnership effort to do that, to unite our staffs and the school board and the city council towards those goals. I'd like them to seek to attract a Smyrna campus of post-secondary or higher education. I'd like them to work with the local businesses to establish partnerships to support our schools. I'd like them to work to promote and support after-school programs with businesses and particularly apartment complexes and the existing programs that we have, like Hands, Feet &amp; Mouth and Rose Garden. I would have a committee focused on economic development, focused on retaining existing businesses and jobs and attracting new businesses and jobs. I'd like to see them work to create architectural standards to give Smyrna a special place of being outside of just the downtown. Establish green building standards, create new ordinances and codes and incentives to give people a reason to do those things, and to establish a Smyrna Business Council that would meet three or four times a year. I would envision a transportation committee. We've got major transportation challenges coming. We need perhaps to look at some sort of circulator system within the city to move people around other than cars. We need to consider if we're going to have some kind of shuttle service going to and from the Braves Stadium for their games and events. And that committee needs to enhance and brand the Smyrna multi-use trail system. I'd like to have an arts council to support the Smyrna Arts and Cultural Council, to find ways to fund and designate public spaces in our parks and right-of-ways for public art. The Braves, we need to begin regular meetings with the Braves organization to plan on how to manage their impact on the city. And finally, a housing committee to work with developers and staff to create incentives for new residential construction focused on affordable housing options and more options for independent senior living, active seniors. I keep hearing over and over again, there's not enough housing for seniors. And again, to encourage more green and energy-efficient housing choices to be built. Thank you.
We, there might be a couple of folks that did not know proper protocol tonight, did not sign up for public comments, citizens comment. So I'll ask if there's anyone here that's running for office that, that wanted to say anything, I'll let you do it at this time. Please come forward and tell us who you are. Oftentimes, we do this at the beginning of a meeting, but being at the end of the meeting, it was going to be a short meeting anyway, you should, you should be here as long as we're here anyway, so. Anyone that's, that's running for office would like to come up and tell us who you are, and we'll make the exception this time. Next time you're in town.
Thanks for the exception. Hey, y'all. My name is Tara Simon. I am running for Ward Six, Mr. Lenica's seat since he's running for mayor. I am not a Smyrna native, but I've been here for about five years. I am a singer by trade, and I own Tara Simon Studios, which is the performing arts studio right around the corner on Concord Road. It's the building with the piano keys on the awning, and if you want to learn how to sing, come on by. It's been so much fun, I have to say. It's exhausting, but it's been a lot of fun going door to door. The best thing that happened to me, and I know you guys would be interested in this, my second door that I hit on Saturday, there was a woman named Jeannie, and I know Bob Deal and, and his girlfriend, Jeannie. I actually met him through, through Wade at the birthday celebration a couple of years ago. Jeannie has been diagnosed with liver cancer. She's already outlived what the doctors said, and I had the distinct honor of singing with her amazing grace on Saturday, going door to door. I posted it just really for Bob to see and for some friends, and in two days, it's, it's gotten almost 4,000 views. And so I got to tell Ms. Jeannie that she's now a local celebrity. That was awesome. So win or lose for the election, I feel like I'm such a winner getting to meet the people of Smyrna in my ward. It's been a true blessing for me, knowing, knowing my neighbors and knowing the people that make this place tick. So again, my name is Tara Simon, and I am running for Ward Six. Appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Anyone else that wanted to make any comments? Okay. If not, that'll close the citizens input portion. If there's no other business to be bought for this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at exactly 8:32.